Ready to roll. All right, it is now six oh two PM on Janu- or January, June twenty-fourth, not January, by all anyways, with eight, June twenty-fourth, we'll call that Columbia City Common Council the order, if everybody please stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Group call, please.
Middleton, here.
Barga, absent.
Romano, here.
We go.
Here.
Here.
Before us, do we have the minutes that was prepared for our last meeting? Do we have any corrections or objections? If I hear none, can I have a motion to?
I move.
Second.
We have a motion made for acceptance of the minutes by Brent and seconded by Jen. Can I move? So can I have a vote to say, accept, show sign?
Stand.
And one up, stand, and approved if those present. Now next up is an amazing evening for everybody here. We have the privilege and honor to bring in new firefighters that are going to be sworn in tonight. And that is one of the, I know personally, I have a lot much respect for the man that's joining our force tonight. It's really cool, and obviously, you guys are loved by a lot of people here, so this is really cool to see everybody here, thank you for being here, and this is a big moment in their lives, as well as ours too, because they're going to be serving us. The lives they may save may be mine, so it's a great thing. So Tom.
Members of the council would like to introduce Seth Jines, Colin Nelson, and Evan Williams. Step forward. We'll look for them.
I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
We're working on the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Indiana.
And the state of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
As a Columbia City firefighter.
As a Columbia City firefighter.
Of the city of Columbia City.
The city of Columbia City.
According to the law.
According to the law.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my ability.
To help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, thank you.
Hey Seth, you want to invite your family up first? Here's all the kids. Get the photos?
You want the American flag and the city flag?
Yeah.
Big smiles. Say cheese.
Jay, smile.
Jay, smile.
Cheese.
Come on dude.
Haley.
I think that's the first. Thank you, everybody.
That's a huge congratulations on that, and again, thank you.
Congratulations, fellas.
Thank you for everybody showing up. Even more than welcome to stay for the exciting rest of the meeting. So enjoy your evening and stay, try to stay cool.
You're welcome to stay, but you really don't want to.
I can actually say that's never happened at City Council, that I know of.
I've never seen that.
I've never seen that, that's really cool.
Thanks for doing that. Huh?
Thanks for doing that.
Yes, you're welcome.
Good to see you, by the way.
Hey, you too.
We had to walk back for tonight.
There you go.
Really neat to see something like that happen here, and good luck with everybody. A monumental moment, the butterflies when that happens, so.
And probably hasn't happened here at City Council.
Yeah, I've never seen it happen at City Council.
That's cool.
It was like Moses parted the waters, though, you guys didn't want photos.
Nope. Nobody wants me in their picture.
How exciting, how exciting for them, and a new life beginning.
And neat for all of us to watch.
Yeah, and I know he was pretty nervous, so.
See the sweat?
Yeah, he was beating up pretty good.
So pretty cool. Well, next on the agenda is we have an ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eight, second reading, amending a chapter one fourteen with the restaurants, and I have a motion to read by title only.
So moved.
It's twenty twenty-five dash six, Dan.
Dash six, oh, I need my glasses, sorry.
We'll get to eight.
Six, here we go. They look like an eighth people without my glasses. Let's go with twenty twenty-five dash six, second reading, may I have a motion to read by title only again? We have a, so moved?
Second.
Yeah, second. So I believe that's okay, so let's go with a vote. Can I have a vote to show sign? Yes and no, okay, we're all consent, so we got four yeses.
Yep, so ordinance twenty twenty-five dash six, an ordinance amending chapter one fourteen, restaurants of the code of the ordinance of the city of Columbia City, Indiana.
Okay, and if you remember, that was talking about the seating and outside the restaurant. We're running into that happening quite frequently, I just saw some today that were out front, and we have a permit now in place to look at, for everybody to take a look at. One of the big concerns is having enough room for a wheelchair to get through, and I think we might have a couple of issues with that, there are a couple of the restaurants, so all the restaurants, pay attention if you're going to be, put a place of tables out there, need to have, apply, have to have an application for temporary outdoor seating permit signed, and advised by all the requirements that we have here, one of the biggest ones that I see is a four-foot walkway in place, so they, people can get a wheelchair through. That currently is, I know I just looked at a couple, and we might have a couple of issues with that, so we're going to have to look at comply with, compliance of that issue, that one of the rules, but there's also some other rules that need to be adhered to, so the Board of Works did approve the application, but we have to also bring it to the council, but first we need to take care of the ordinance twenty twenty-five dash six as it's been written, so we'll first go with that, and then we'll go with the permit that's in place for us also. So does anybody have any questions about the twenty twenty-five dash six second reading for restaurants?
I just wanted to verify again that this is something that everyone is going to need to come in and get a permit, whether you've been having seating out front for years, or you're just starting to do that.
Correct, yep, it will take effect July first.
Are we sending information out to the restaurants that are doing the seating, just so they're aware?
We'll regentle.
Yeah, the one restaurant, we approved back when they first was opening, he asked for permission to put tables out there, and Board of Works approved that back a few months ago, and so, but he's still going to have to come in and fill out the permit, so he understands what's going on, even though we approved it a while back. So can I have a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash six, second and final reading?
I'll take it.
Okay. Move by Jen, seconded by Brent. Any further discussion? All those in favor, show a sign. It's all approved, if those present. Next up, well, let's go ahead and take over, while we're on the topic, let's go ahead and talk about our application for temporary outdoor seating permit. Some of us have had a chance to take a look at it, some of us maybe not, I don't know yet, who's had that going down.
Dan, that's just for information, we just had to approve the ten dollar fee in Board of Works.
Okay.
So, but, so you guys can look at that, but Marcia's reviewed, Marcia's reviewed the permit, and comfortable with it, we're good, yeah.
So basically, this is more for information for you guys, I thought we had to go through council for a second, but obviously, we don't, so it's basically.
I think it's pretty clear, it outlines the major points, that it needs to have a four-foot area, it needs to have a detailed drawing to scale, showing what they want to do with the seating, and also the one million dollar liability policy.
Right, so I think this is, since a lot of the, we are finally having restaurants downtown, and now people are placing tables and chairs out there.
And the restaurants are busy, so they need that extra space.
Yeah, it's a great, it's honestly a great thing, so it's just that we have to have some rules in place to, for the safety of, not only the safety of the resident, people that's visiting the business, but also, so people that may be disadvantaged with wheelchairs, they have a way to get through, so, all right, so next up is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash seven, for second reading, can I have a motion to read by title only?
Moved.
Second.
Motion by Brent, seconded by Jen. Go ahead and please read.
Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash seven, an ordinance setting rates of pay and expenses for employees of city, or employees of Columbia City Municipal Electric Utility, while rendering mutual aid to other communities.
We discussed this last, last meeting, about how, you know, there's been times where our utility will be called on to serve other communities when there's a disaster that happens, this here puts it in writing to compensate us probably more fairly than what we had before, so we just don't go for anything, but there are some towns and cities that have faced tornadoes, or just things that happen, and there's a city that we can set some of our people down to help fix that, some of the terrible things that happen, so it's kind of a neat thing that we have people capable of doing that, so, does anybody have any questions about this before we take the motion? Okay, can I have a motion to accept ordinance twenty twenty-five dash seven on second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have motion and second. By one, by Jen, motion by Jen, seconded by Brent? Oh Jen, Jen, okay, got you, okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, can I see sign for, it is approved by all those present. Next up is ordinance number, here we go with the dash twenty-eight, how's that, if I can get my glasses on, I can see a little better. Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eight, second reading, amendment to the chapter one fifteen for solicitation, can I have a motion to read by title only?
Second.
Second, first motion by Jen, seconded by Jennifer, so please read.
Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eight, an ordinance amending chapter one fifteen, door-to-door solicitation of the code of ordinances of the city of Columbia City, Indiana.
All right, if you remember, we discussed this last meeting also, basically, it's helping people be identified by a name tag, and have papers, proof of a permit for the solicitation going door-to-door, because right now what's happening, there's a lot of, lot of salespeople, I had one in our area last, this last weekend, were going door-to-door, and I, I'd never, he never stopped at my house, because I wasn't there, but I seen him going, but I didn't know if he had a permit, and everything is signed, you know, with a name tag, and making sure we know who they are.
And they have to have it on their person.
And they have, yes, so this here changes, just to make sure that residents feel comfortable answering the door when somebody comes up to them, knowing that they have, the residents can ask them, you know, if you have the paperwork, you have the permit, you have, where's your name tag, to make sure that they're legit on coming to us, or coming to the residence, you know, if there's, if you come up to a door and says no solicitation, you better not be going up to that door, because I know when we're knocking on doors for election, we've seen a, no solicitors on doors, so you know, you gotta follow the rules and do what they're told, so, does anybody have any questions about this? All right, let me pull that back up here. So can I have a motion to accept ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eight on second and final reading?
So moved.
So moved by Brent.
Again.
Seconded by Jen. Hey, any further discussion? Hearing none, can I see sign for, it's all approved by those present. Okay, next up is department report, Thomas.
Um, ladder testing, as I had spoke about, that the last council meeting was completed, all of our ground ladders passed, no issues, the only thing we got pinged on was the intercom system on the ladder truck, which has been a problematic system since we got it, we've had it replaced several times, and it goes a couple of years and goes out again, but along with that, we were contacted here several weeks ago by a company by the name of Convoy Tech on Fort Wayne, one of their employees lives here in Columbia City, and they called and wanted to know if they could demo, and us assist them in making a promotional video for their company, and at the end of it, we would get this camera intercom system for our ladder truck. So I spoke with the mayor about it, he had me get with Marcia, we had a whole harmless agreement drawn up, both parties have signed, and we will be helping them with that, which could potentially bring us out of the, that little bit of a violation we have with our ladder truck and the intercom system, so, just by helping them do a promotional video, so hopefully that works out, and everything else is, all equipment is up and running again, so hopefully that holds true for a while, and see how that goes. Things have been really busy, we got through Old Settlers pretty much without much of a, without any big issues, the parade went well, except for the heat, which I'll welcome as easier in the next few days, so hopefully it continues down the path, not will ramp up and get ready for, on the Fourth of July, met with Cam Tor, Matt Green, I think is going to listen. And we measured out all of the fallouts for the fireworks and things like that, and so they're good to go, and then four H comes up later in the summer, so hopefully things continue to go well.
All right, thank you, question to Tom.
Matt?
Terry and I are starting to look at the sign again, just to put some finishing touches on, so we can get that working, we removed the two concrete monuments up at the Korean Garden at the park when you first come in, we took bleachers down and picnic tables for Old Settlers, and we returned them then Saturday night, at the same time, the guys, they had to work really hard, because we had a thirty-one team tournament going on at the same weekend that Old Settlers was in. Fourth of July, beyond the third, we have all gone blue to perform again this year, and we contacted Cam Tor to see if we could get a little bit more fireworks, and that's why Tom was, was looking at measurements and things, to make sure that we could handle going a little bit bigger on some of the shelves, so we're looking forward to a better, bigger firework show this year.
Terrific, yeah, I used to have stuff in my gutters at my house, because I'm right down there by the edge, we got the true three D effect, when it was coming right at it, but that was kind of cool, though, it just, when it's coming, when you got something hot coming at you, you had to move.
That's real cool.
But yeah, we had, we had shell cases in my gutters that were that big, it was pretty amazing.
I will say that we make sure that they meet in AP eleven twenty-three, which is the rulings on fireworks, and it's seventy feet, if anybody has questions, it's seventy feet per inch of mortar, and they have that between the fireworks and the bridge, and the edge of the bridge, so if that's happening, that's interesting.
Yeah, it just brings some excitement. Yeah, my family loved it, so. Any questions to Matt? Gary?
All right, so like Tom and Matt alluded on here, Old Settlers Day went well, just a few minor issues, parade went great, I didn't think, you know, with the new people doing the parade, I thought it might have a few more hiccups, but it actually went pretty good, so hats off to the OSD, good job. Officer Sturgis is doing well at the academy, tornado sirens were ordered, that have a lead time of sometime in July, so we was hoping to get them up, you know, two of them is down out here, but hopefully we don't have any bad weather until we get them back up, so knocking wood that that doesn't happen. Gearing up, like they said, Fourth of July, which is on the third, so we'll be putting the parking signs out that morning on Columbia Parkway from Shoreland Court to North Shore Court, including Lake Crest Drive, Riveron Court, and Shorewood Court, those, no parking signs will be all on the fire hydrant side, and so if there is an emergency and Tom needs to get down there, he can get to his fire hydrant, so, plus it makes it easier for traffic to get in and out of there. Gearing up for First Friday, lots of summer events this year, as I told the Board of Works earlier, Officer Ewing came in right before the meeting and had a sit-down conversation with me, he's given us two-week notice, he's got a lot of personal things going on in his life right now, he loved the job, loved the city, loved the department, it's just he had to make a decision about personal things in his job, so he had to take some time and really think about it, but he gave us two-week notice, so they let me, I'm going to be opening up a process to fill his positions, so that's unfortunate. Yeah.
Question to Gary.
He's a great guy, I mean, he was, he was doing a great job, caught right on, doing good work, it's disappointing.
Terry?
Electric Department finished the installation of the fiber network into the CT jail, so we spent the last three days installing server equipment, server racks, and hopefully by the end of the week, that'll be functional to where we can start running the control from the doors and security cameras, and then after that's finished, we'll install equipment out of Eagle Park in Old Concession, we have server room in there, so that will feed all of Eagle Park as far as any kind of public wifi, security cameras, et cetera, so kind of a busy summer.
Question to Terry. Is Marcia?
Marcia's with us.
Okay, Marcia?
I have nothing.
Okay, Leslie?
Thank you.
I have nothing.
Okay, I have a report from Kelly, I didn't read the first meeting, because I forgot, quite honestly, says our crew had old settlers cleaned up on Sunday morning, Brooks Construction Project update, they are working on ADA ramps, and will be milling and paving ten street segments throughout city starting next week or so. Our concrete crew finished putting sidewalks and ADA ramps in at Eagle Glen, and will be working on smaller projects coming up. Next week, we will have a crew starting to go through alleys and streets, streets trimming back limbs, so that's Kelly's street report. I said this in the first meeting, but I'll say it again, is want to be extremely thankful for the cooperation between our city and fire with Old Settlers Committee, I know personally, I've been down there, and I thought it went very well, so between, you know, Gary and a fire chief and the Old Settlers Committee, I think the whole line of communication was extremely well, along with our park department going up and putting bleachers up, and all that, all the work that goes with that, and I believe our water department actually does with the water fountains and things, so takes a lot of cooperation and communication for this all to come fruition, and I, I know I personally experienced it down there, I thought it was great, I enjoyed the way they had things set up this year, with the ride to the side, the walk-through was pretty, pretty sweet, so I could get my elephant here, my sugar went crazy that night, but that's all right, so other than that, I have nothing else. You have, what's up with you?
Okay, well, this week, the Columbia City Arts Commission is running their second annual Spark Art Camp, and this is an opportunity for kids who might not otherwise be able to afford camp, to be able to attend an art camp where they are learning music, dance, and fine arts, and this year, we are excited to share that it was funded by the Indiana Arts Commission, so something kind of cool, there's been a ton of work put into it this year, and I would definitely be remiss if I didn't recognize April Frazier for heavily leading and, and making this thing happen this year, so.
Terrific. Anything else?
I don't think so, other than with Fourth of July coming up, I think it's really important for people to be up to speed on what the laws are regarding fireworks, and, you know, just because you can do something doesn't mean you should, if you're annoying your neighbors, just don't.
Yeah, I saw some going off this weekend.
Yeah.
So, but that had happened. Jen?
I have nothing.
Brent?
I just want to do a personal thank you to the department heads and departments, Old Settlers, I got up there at six o'clock Sunday morning to help do cleanup, and those boys don't need much help, I walked courthouse lawn and picked up debris, but other than that, street department, they know what they're doing, man, they, they've got that under control, fire department, working to get everything sprayed down, cleaned up, working together, it's, it always amazes me how we can go from Saturday night being a mess, to Sunday by nine o'clock, you can hardly tell they were there, so, to, to all the departments, fantastic job, I had multiple conversations through the week with, with multiple police officers, and great people to have conversations with, man, they were, they were pleasant, smiling, just good guys, man, we've got a bunch of good guys on our departments, and I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Great, audience, do you have anything? Please come on up, or?
For our esteemed council, and also to our public servants who are here tonight, I just want to send greetings from St. John Evangelical Lutheran Church on Kaiser Road, my name is again, Gino Marpetti, Pastor David Mummens, who some of you may know, served St. John's for thirty years, retired in June of last year, I have been serving them since August first of last year in interim or vacancy capacity, and I was recently installed on May tenth as their official full-time pastor, so I just wanted to come and introduce myself to the council, and offer my service to the city in any way that I can be of service to, to all of you, to the, to the entire citizens, all the citizens here. Uh, my pleasure has been to serve over the past, now, when I'm ten months. So I really am enjoying to be here and I hope I can be here, uh, for quite a long while, I'm willing. So.
Well, congratulations on your appointment.
Thank you.
That's awesome. Yeah, look forward to possibly working with you in some way, shape, or form. We never know. Um, I, I really appreciate you being here to introduce yourself to us.
Thank you.
It's always, uh, we always hear a name, but we don't always see a face. So that's, uh, that's really great that you're here. Thank you.
One, one of my hopes is, I know Pastor Mummens before his retirement and before COVID had kind of shut a lot of things down, uh, and disrupted, disrupted our sense of normalcy. I do know that he had been very heavily involved with the local jail ministry and that's something I know a lot of the parishioners at Saint John's are interested in kind of re, recovering. Uh, and I would like to be able to help with that in any way, uh, that I can. So I'm sure I'll be touched, in touch with Department Corrections, uh, in the sheriff, uh, in the county here to, to see if we can serve the, the jails in any way that ways.
Terrific. I serve in, uh, jail ministry as well.
Oh, very good.
So that's, uh, interesting, uh, adventure, uh, especially with the new jail happening and going on out there, trying to get organized so we can go in and speak with the.
Yeah, because the, the old jail just used to be like right across the street. Is that right? Okay. Yeah, I'm still kind of getting to know Columbia City a little bit. Most of my time, though, for the last eight years, I've been spending in Fort, the Fort Wayne area. So I'm still getting kind of used to all the, the, the very fine and narrow, uh, figures here in, in town.
All right, well, I look forward to possibly working with you on something like that and seeing where, where, where we can go.
I'll thank you all again for your time, uh, and again, my pleasure to be of service to people in Columbia City. So.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So anybody got any other comments? Uh, no other audience here, so let's call the meeting as yours.